Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting for August 10th, 2020. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:13. The meeting is now in order. We are running a little bit late. We had some technical difficulties with our current online procedures, so we will get the meeting rolling. Before we begin our meeting, there will be separate periods of public comment tonight. One for each public hearing and one general public comment period towards the end of the meeting. For comments on any matter concerning the city business, persons speaking during the public comment period associated with a public hearing may address the planning board regarding the public hearing item only. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment periods, please call 818-238-3335. Again, it's 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open for each period of public comment. We will get started with our invocation given by Board Member Hadian. Board Member Hadian, will you please lead us?
Lord, we thank you for this day and the many blessings we have received. As this meeting begins today, I pray for each person here. Give us listening ears and thoughtful words. Give us presence of mind and an open heart. Amen.
Thank you. I'll lead us in our flag salute. If you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands "One Nation, Under God, Individual Liberty and Justice for All."
Can we get the roll call?
Yes, Vice Chair. Board Member Hadian?
I'm here.
Board Member Lou?
Present.
Board Member Gamboa?
Here.
And Vice Chair Rosati?
I am here.
Chairperson Altukianian? For the record, he is absent. Thank you.
In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and the interest of public health and safety, board members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in planning board meetings. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Do we have any announcements?
No new announcements.
Okay, we will roll into our meetings tonight. Item number one, now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 190007105 concerning the application for a conditional use request for an existing mobile gas station and convenience store to allow the sale of beer and wine for the off-site consumption, subject to obtaining a Type 20 alcohol license from the ABC. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person? Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
All those have either been provided to you in your agenda packet or electronically prior to the meeting.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department, please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, planning board members. My name is Xavier Thomas, planning technician for the City of Burbank Planning Division. Before the presentation, I wanted to state that two additional public comments for this item did come in earlier this afternoon, both in support of the request, both of which have been emailed to the board prior to tonight's hearing. However, if warranted by the board, I can read them into the administrative record after the presentation. With that said, Danny, can you please begin the presentation?
Good evening, Chair Altukianian and members of the board. My name is Xavier Thomas, planning technician with the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. I'm here today to present to you the proposed conditional use permit for a Type 20 alcohol license for the property located at 349 South Glen Oaks Boulevard, which is an existing mobile gas station and convenience store. The applicant for the conditional use permit is Sherri Olson, representing Mobile Gas and Market. The application being considered as a conditional use permit or CUP. The CUP request is for a Type 20 alcohol license for the off-site consumption of beer and wine inside the existing convenience store. Alcohol sales are permitted in the BCC3 zone with approval of a CUP. The mobile gas station is not proposing any alterations or additions to the site. The CUP would allow the applicant to continue operations of the existing convenience store while adding beer and wine sales for off-site consumption as an ancillary component of their business. The existing market operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The overall market would continue to operate with these hours. However, the alcohol sales would be limited to specific hours, which should be outlined later in the presentation as part of the discussion on the recommended conditions of approval. The existing mobile gas station and convenience store is located at 349 South Glen Oaks Boulevard on the southwest corner of Glen Oaks Boulevard and Verdugo Avenue. The gas station is located in the BCC3 Burbank Center Commercial General Business Zone. The site is approximately 12,186 square feet in size with a 1,910 square foot market. Surrounding the gas station are other commercial and retail uses on either side of Glen Oaks Boulevard and Verdugo Avenue, along with residential multifamily housing located directly behind the project site on Verdugo Avenue. This map identifies other establishments within the same U.S. Census tract that have a light alcohol license for off-site alcohol sales. There are currently three of such licenses within this census tract, the closest being point one miles away on the other side of Glen Oaks Boulevard. None of the other sites are directly adjacent to the project site. Approval of the CUP would increase the number of off-site alcohol sales in the census tract to a total of four. However, this would not result in over-concentration or undue concentration of off-site alcohol sales within the designated census tract. Therefore, the planning board is not required to make a finding of the public convenience necessity. This is the existing floor plan. As shown on the floor plan, the display of alcohol would be exclusively in the existing cooler section of the convenience store. This area is approximately 189 square feet, which would make up approximately 10% of the gross floor area of the market. Staff has received public comments pertaining to the requested CUP for selling alcohol at this gas station. A few of those comments expressed concerns for alcohol use in the alley that is located directly behind the gas station. Here are the photographs of said alley. Staff has also received correspondence in support of the CUP request. Based on staff's analysis, the CUP request is compatible in neighborhood character and the surrounding commercial uses, which are made up of restaurants and various retail uses. The alcohol sales would be an ancillary use inside the mobile gas station. There are not any interior alterations or exterior changes being proposed with this CUP. In addition, the proposed resolution would include conditions of approval that would create safeguards related to community concerns that were mentioned in the public comments. Consisting with previous off-site alcohol sales before the board, staff incorporated several conditions of approval into the resolution that placed limitations on the business in the sale of alcohol while allowing the rest of the convenience store to continue its current operations. Such conditions include prohibiting the sale of single beer cans and limiting sales to packaging that contains at least four or more cans/bottles, limiting the alcohol sales to a maximum 10% of the store area, prohibiting the sale of beer or wine from ice tubs, a restriction on the allowable hours for the sale of beer or wine between 11:00 a.m. and midnight, and requiring the business owner to enforce prohibitions against loitering and consuming alcohol on the site. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning board approve a resolution approving project number 19-0007105 for a conditional use permit to allow the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption through a Type 20 license at the existing mobile gas station and market located at 349 South Glen Oaks Boulevard, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now invite the applicant or their representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening, Chair and members of the planning board. My name is Sherri Olson. I'm on behalf here of the applicant for Mobile Gas Station and Market. We concur with the planning staff's report, and we've read all their conditions of approval, and we agree with all of them, and we're here to answer any questions you might have. And I wanted to add that we did our community outreach, and we have over 350 signatures, and we, you know, we reached out to our nearby neighbors for support, and we're here to answer any questions you guys might have for us.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us at this time. It may take a couple of minutes for the first few callers to get through the line. Madam Clerk, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
And if we can give any callers a minute, an opportunity, give them about a minute for calling.
Sorry, I was on mute. My name is Ben Quante. I am owner of the mobile station. Thank you so much for everybody's time, and I have member of community that are here, and if you don't mind, they can come and they speak right in here.
Be there three minutes.
Okay, let's hear them.
Thank you so much. Can you please?
Hi, everyone. My name is my head, Mike Petrosim. I happen to live right across the way for about 10 years or so. I've been coming here. I always have great service. Sometimes I usually just get gas. A lot of the times I get a drink, and if there's a beer around or something like that, it would be convenient, you know, from time to time. But most of the time I just come for gas, I get great service, I get snacks, you know, and it's so close to home that I'm a frequent visitor. But I'm not sure what else I could say further, other than that. Yeah, that's been my experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shana Vacha. I'm a resident of East Hunger Avenue, about less than 500 feet from the retail location. And I would just like to express my support for their permit to sell beer and wine on location. The staff at the mobile location is extremely friendly, and they're always maintaining sort of a safe environment around the mobile station. I do also have access to the alley that was behind the gas station, and I would like to just express that I'm not worried about sort of any uptick in activity happening in the alleyway. My residence is adjacent to the alleyway, and I have no sort of concerns whatsoever in terms of people purchasing beer and wine on location and consuming it in the nearby premises. All the staff here is very responsible as well, so I imagine that they will continue to uphold and conduct themselves in a manner as made in this presentation and in accordance with the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hold on, hold, give me a second.
Thank you so much.
Give me one second. We have a caller on the line, and we'll come back to you. Madam Clerk, go ahead and put the caller in. Hang tight, guys.
Bear with us, they're transferring the caller now.
Yes.
Vasquen, you are now live with the planning board.
I'm sorry.
Welcome to the planning board meeting. Go ahead and make your public comment.
Okay, my public comment is I've been their neighbor for 30 years, and I live in 345 East Verdugo Avenue, apartment 110. And I've been, you know, their customer for 30 years. I've known them for a long time. I have no problem. I never had any problem or still don't have any problem with them. And if they want to, you know, get a license to sell beer or wine, as long as nobody drinks and drives, I have no problem whatsoever. They can sell wherever they want. And that's all I have to say. I don't know what else to say because I've never been in this kind of, you know, questioning. So that is my opinion.
Thank you. We appreciate your call, and we appreciate your participation.
Absolutely, absolutely. You have a nice one. Take care. Bye.
We have another caller.
We have one more caller calling in. Give us one second.
So heal, one more, I put you live with the planning board. So heal, you are now live with the planning board.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. You're here at the planning board meeting. Would you like to make a public comment?
Yes.
No?
Yes, yes.
Yes, please do.
Yeah, I live next to the gas station. Okay, I'm, I'm, I left long time ago, since long time ago, but I love their bank. I don't mind their next to gas station, nice people, very nice area, quiet, very clean. They take care of it, they take care of the business, and I don't mind what they do about the project. I'm happy for them. I'm happy for the whole area. They're very nice people. They're very, very, they take care of the business completely. I see too many different areas, not like here. Here's very nice, quiet, clean.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we don't have any other callers at the time, so did you want to continue, Ben, with your meeting? Go ahead. Sir, the one who's got the "Our Next" shirt, go ahead and speak.
Yeah, yeah, I actually live, I live near the gas station. Oh, yeah, I live near the gas station, and it's, it's, it's a big house trying to grow like, for, for, it's like a ball, like a rouse or all those other places, so it would be really helpful, you know, if you're somewhere closer, right, to get beer and wine and that kind of thing. Yeah, it's my favorite location to get gas in there.
Okay, well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Perfect, thank you. I think we have another caller on the line.
I have my neighbor next door and this gentleman. Very quick.
All right, go ahead.
I have regular customers that are coming in and, you know, for a gas, for a drink, for coffee. I will support them. Really a nice, clean environment.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your participation.
All right.
You done, Ben?
Thank you for your time.
Is that all your people?
I have more people, but because it's 15 minutes, so.
Okay.
At first.
I appreciate it, thank you. Do we have any callers on the line there?
There are no more callers.
No, okay. I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Yes, Chair Rosati, I actually did want to clarify one thing. In the presentation, when I discussed the conditions of approval for the hours of which the alcohol would be sold, I stayed between 11:00 and midnight. The actual correct time that the alcohol could be sold for off-site consumption would actually be between 10:00 a.m. and midnight. The 10:00 a.m. and midnight is actually displayed in the resolution and in the actual conditions of approval that's before you. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Vice Chair, if I can also, just one clarification.
Yes, sir.
On condition of approval 13, I think we have a typo on my apologies, I thought we caught this. It's no illuminated alcohol. So I just want to change the word, the second word after "no" to make sure it's illuminated, alcohol advertising?
Got it, yeah.
Okay.
Xavier, anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You have a maximum time of 10 minutes.
I just want to add that there's a lot of security measures at this establishment on the exterior of the building as well as the interior of the building, and he has, you know, done a great job securing this, and the alcohol will be in secured lockable doors as well. So I just wanted to make sure that was added in, but thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions for staff or the applicant?
I have a question. This is...
Board Member Hadian?
We received an addendum by email, which is the signatures of neighbors. Two things about that addendum. First is that the hours of selling beer and wine is noted as 6:00 a.m. to, oh, no, no sales from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. So what is that? Is it requesting that they be permitting? I think that doesn't read with the conditions. Do you want to take a look at that?
Correct. That was their intention of what they actually wanted to request originally. However, I did send them the conditions of approval, which do state the times between 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 midnight, and those are the conditions that you as the board would essentially agree upon, and those would be the conditions that they would have to follow by, not the ones that they have stated inside of the petition itself.
Also, I wanted to, this is a question for staff. Usually when people in support of a project sign a document, they give consent to share their information with the public. I don't see that here, and also, I don't know if city has actually verified the signatory on these 50-something names here, almost like more than that. It's like 80, 84 signatures. I see some names that don't have addresses, some names that I don't know if it's their real name, number 52, Donald Trump, so I recommend to exclude that from the final CUP approval. Other than that, I'm in support of the project.
I think Trump signed it. I'm being funny.
I know. Well, that might be their name, but just saying, so.
And Vice Chair, if I can just, just to clarify, we, the reason it was included as an addendum, it was provided by the applicant just to show support. As far as the validity of it being an actual petition and meeting all the criteria that would otherwise, we couldn't, we couldn't confirm that, nor would we. So at this point, it's basically whatever was communicated in that form, and it's included in the administrative record, but the board in and of itself can consider to, you know, to consider an item as part of their analysis or not, so I leave it up to the discretion of the board.
Yeah, I mean, one of the speakers did have a mobile shirt on, so. But, yeah, and we need to weigh those signatures, we also need to weigh, you know, people who had a chance to call and didn't call and things like that, so. But thank you for noting that, Board Member Hadian. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none? Hadian, are you good?
Yes.
Okay. Now declare that the hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure?
I'll go first because I don't have the camera, so.
Yeah, I can't see you, so just jump in, just jump in.
I gave you my feedback. I'm in support of the project. I see that some neighbors are not in favor, especially because like maybe the noise, the crowd, but that's what's happening with all of the gas stations selling off-site beer and wine. And when city brings a proposal to approve an application as CUP, they have looked into all the measures, and I hope that if city and applicant can work together to put additional measures so the neighbors do not complain, this, this will be at the end something we do for a business in Burbank. We don't give this license, we don't approve this CUP, people will buy online, and the applicant will come back with an appeal or a new application. So I support the project as long, the CUP as long as all the measures and precautions are put in place.
Thank you. Board Member Lou?
I'm also in support of the CUP. I think that we heard from stakeholders today and in emails were also in support, and I appreciate that they took the time to share their views. And, you know, for folks who may have hesitations, I would say again, this is a conditional use permit, so if any of the conditions are violated, it can always be revoked. So I am also in favor.
Board Member Gamboa?
Yeah, I think, I think this project seems fine. I think most people expect to be able to go into a convenience store and grab a six-pack or bottle of wine or something as needed, so I imagine a lot of people walked in there, asked for beer or wine, and it's not there, and they're kind of surprised, and they just go to 7-Eleven or whatever down the street. So I don't think it's a major issue, and my only maybe thought was that perhaps there's a condition where beer couldn't be sold in glass bottles, but I'm not sure that really addresses much of the issues. I know for me personally, I go around my neighborhood, I see broken glass a lot, and if there's a way to limit some of that, but then I do recognize like tea and other drinks are sold in glass bottles, so I don't know how effective that might be. Otherwise, I think it is, I think it'll be fine.
Thank you. And I'll just say that I concur with the rest of my board members, so if somebody wants to make the appropriate motion?
You want us to make a motion?
Yes, if one of the board members can make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for a resolution of the planning board of the City of Burbank approving a conditional use permit. Um, I'll make a motion, uh, for a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving a conditional use permit, project number 19-0007105, to allow the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption through a type 20 license at the existing mobile gas station and market located at 349 South Lenox Boulevard, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
Thank you, Board Member Hadian. We have a motion?
I'll second. I think we need to second, uh, or have the motion be as amended based on.
Yeah, the motion's, uh, Board Member Hadian, as amended?
As amended.
And then, are you good with that, Board Member Lou?
Yes.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion?
Just, please, uh, um, clarify what was amended?
Uh, the amended was the illuminated sign.
Condition 13, uh, we corrected the spelling on the word illuminated.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so any other discussion?
Roll call vote?
I was gonna say, let's go ahead and do the roll call. Who does the roll call?
I will do that.
Okay.
Roll call vote for the item, uh, Board Member Lou?
Yes.
Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
That's a 4-0 vote in favor of the CUP request.
Great. So we'll take a second to reset for the next, uh, item. Uh, thank you guys for, for participating. Yeah, are we ready to go? Okay. Uh, we're going to item number two. Now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 20000279, concerning the application for the conditional use permit to allow for conversion of a, of the 76 gasoline service station, existing 1653 square foot automobile service area that includes a food mart to a 1553 square foot convenience market that also, that includes the sale of beer and wine for the premise, for the premise consumption in conjunction with the, this request. I believe there's a typo here. The applicant is also requesting a determination of public convenience or necessity that is needed in order to allow alcohol sales at the convenience mart. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No. Have any planning board members had, had any communications, including written, oral with the applicant, the applicant's representative, or any other person?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
Uh, only those that have been included within the agenda packet.
Will the representative of the community development department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening Chair Rosati and members of the board. My name is Karen Chavez and I am a planning technician with the planning division. Tonight, I will be presenting the proposed conditional use permit for the property located at 901 North San Fernando Boulevard. The applicant is Ahmad Gaderi. He is representing the 76th gasoline service station. The project site is an existing gasoline service station that is located at 901 North San Fernando Boulevard, at the intersection of North San Fernando Boulevard and Burbank Boulevard. The project site is located in the NSFC North San Fernando Commercial Zone and is 11,000 square feet in size. The properties to the north of the project site are zoned NSFC North San Fernando Commercial and contain full-service sit-down restaurants and a bank. To the south of the project site, the zoning is PD 89-4 that contains retail. To the west, the zoning is NSFC North San Fernando Commercial that contains surface parking and Interstate 5. And to the east, the zoning is BCC 2 Burbank Center Commercial Limited Business that contains a bank and surface parking. In the graphic shown, the yellow box indicates the boundaries of the subject property and the red box indicates the existing automobile service area that includes a food mart. The 76th gasoline service station currently operates as an existing automobile service area. The planning board previously approved a CUP in 1972 at the project site pursuant to resolution number 170 to allow the construction and maintenance of an automobile service station. The applicant is required to apply for a new CUP to allow modifications to the development. The application being considered is a CUP in order to, one, convert an existing 1,653 square foot automobile service area that includes a food mart at an existing 76th gasoline service station to a 1,553 square foot convenience market that includes the sale of beer and wine for off-premise consumption. Two, establish development and design standards for height and setbacks that apply to the gas station. And three, permit the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. Additionally, the Burbank Municipal Code requires that as a planning board, make a finding that the public convenience or necessity would be served by the issuance of an off-sale alcohol license if such establishment is located in an area or census tract with an undue concentration of off-sale retail alcohol beverage licenses. The proposed improvements on the property include the conversion of an existing automobile service area into a food mart as well as parking and landscaping improvements. There are no proposed changes to the location of the existing fuel tanks, canopy, pumps, and dispensers. The required parking for a convenience market is 3.3 per 1,000 square feet for a total of five parking spaces. The project would provide the required five parking spaces. It is not anticipated that the requested improvements, including the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption, will significantly increase the demand for parking, nor adversely affect the daily operations of the gasoline service station and adjacent commercial uses. The 76th gasoline service station has an existing 1,653 square foot automobile service area that includes a small food mart. The applicant proposed a conversion to a 1,553 square foot convenience market that includes the sale of beer and wine for off-premise consumption. On the screen, you can see the different areas of the proposed convenience market and the applicant will be conditioned to limit the display of alcohol to a maximum of 10% of the sales floor area. The applicant is upgrading the building with new aluminum storefront entrance doors, the addition of more windows, fiber cement composite siding along the front and street-facing side facades, a parapet along the roof perimeter, and as a condition of approval, staff is recommending the applicant-proposed design features on the front elevation so that the entrance is architecturally highlighted. Burbank Municipal Code, Section 10-1-2704G states that automobile service gas stations do not have established development and design standards for heights and setbacks. Tailored project-specific standards are established through the CUP process. Flexibility is provided in order to accommodate for the unique design of these types of uses. Understanding that there are no standards, the applicant is requesting that the planning board establish these standards for the project. Staff is recommending that the board require that the project comply with the standards that would generally apply to a typical commercial building in the NSFC zone with one exception. The applicant cannot comply with an internal ceiling height standard that requires a minimum internal ceiling height of 16 feet. The applicant is requesting that the existing height of 12 feet be allowed in order to minimize the cost and scope of the improvements of the project. The subject property is in the U.S. Census tract number 3106.01. Based upon the population within this census tract as determined by the 2010 U.S. Census, ABC has established a concentration threshold of three off-sale licenses for this tract. Currently, there are three existing off-sale licenses within this census tract. Because this census tract contains three licenses, it has reached its concentration threshold and a public convenience or necessity finding is required. Although three off-sale licenses exist within this census tract, the 76th gasoline service station is a neighborhood-serving gasoline station with a convenience market that would provide a convenience to shoppers and is anticipated to responsibly sell alcohol that would not create any problems in the neighborhood. Additionally, in order to minimize potential impacts typically associated with alcohol sales for off-premises consumption, conditions of approval have been integrated into the project, including limiting the sale of beer and wine to the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. midnight and prohibiting the sale of single beer cans regardless of size and conditioning that they only be sold in the manufacturer's packaging in at least four cans, bottles, or more. The map shows the location of existing licenses and distance to the project site. If the request is approved, the establishment would continue to operate as a gasoline station with an expanded convenience store that would operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There is no area that would be dedicated to the consumption of alcohol on the property and the sale of beer and wine is strictly for off-premises consumption with sales limited to the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. as identified in the conditions of approval. As part of a best practice approach to running a gasoline service station with sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption, the applicant would require employees who sell alcoholic beverages to complete the license education on alcohol and drugs lead training. It is staff's assessment that the project with the associated conditions of approval would comply with the applicable zoning regulations, that the use is not detrimental to existing uses and it is consistent with and complementary to the uses permitted in the existing surrounding area, that a finding of public convenience and necessity can be made for the approval of an alcohol license and that the project complies with all the applicable findings necessary for approval of the conditional use permit. Therefore, staff recommends the planning board approve the project by adopting the following. A resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving a conditional use permit, project number 20-0000279, allowing for the conversion of an existing automotive service area at an existing gas station to a convenience market that includes the sale of beer and wine for off-the-premise consumption and a determination of public convenience or necessity to allow for the alcohol sales for the property at 901 North San Fernando Boulevard, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation and we are available for questions.
Thank you. I will now invite the applicant or their representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Ahmad Gaderi with A&amp;S Engineering. Thank you for your time this afternoon. As the staff indicated, our project consists of three, uh, three sections. One is the conversion of the existing base into a, uh, food mart, basically expanding the existing food mart that, uh, there's currently at the site. Number two consists of the exterior modifications to upgrade the existing facility. The current owner of the site, uh, has upgraded his canopy and feeling in the recent weeks and this is the third base of the project that Chuck is working on improving the, uh, exterior of his building. And number three, of course, is the, uh, sale of beer and wine for off-site consumptions. We have had a great time, uh, working with staff during the past number of months. It's been a pleasure and they have guided us through this process. We have reviewed the conditions of approval and, uh, we are, uh, we have no problem with compliance with those conditions and, uh, are here to answer any questions and look forward to hopefully getting your approval.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call 818-238-3335. Again, it's 818-238-3335. The flow, the phone lines are open. Please bear with us as we take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through the line.
So there, there are no callers on the line, but if we give it a minute, see if we get any.
Okay.
Yes, I would like to also comment on my project too.
Okay, give us one second.
Sure.
Any callers? Mueller? Mueller? No callers. Going once, going twice. Okay. Um, Mr. Mercer, go ahead. You gotta turn on your mic.
Yeah. Keeps unmuting, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Anyhow, uh, I started my business, uh, back in 1979, the first day of the fuel shortage. I've been on that corner servicing the public, uh, needs for the automotive and fueling transportation needs. The automotive business has changed drastically and, um, I'm trying to retool my, uh, retrofit, change my business to the more, uh, the needs of the general public, the driving public, uh, instead of having a automotive service bay. I have, as Ahmad said, that, uh, you know, we have basically three phases. I had to re-invest a lot of money in the project just to re-image the corner recently uh, and put in all new fuel dispensers for the changing credit card type stuff and the dispensers were old and they needed to be replaced. And I'm looking forward to modernizing my, my business, uh, and I would appreciate the board, um, following along with me, I guess. I'm not a great speaker, sorry. We've always been there for the community, I like to think. We've always been there to help people. That's kind of been my motto, uh, is to help people. Today, as I say, the automotive industry and the service station industry is pretty much, um, to the younger generations, they have no idea what a service station actually is. Uh, and, um, would just, uh, love to go forward. I've spent a lot of time and effort and been working on this for three or four years trying to get this project, uh, changed and so forth. Thank you for your consideration.
Well said. Thank you very much. Let me just check back. Do we have any callers? No. Okay. There being no further public, public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the community development department like to make any further comments?
No further comments, thank you.
Would the applicant like to make any further comments?
Uh, no, thank you. I'm fine.
Does the board have any questions for staff or the applicant? Board Member Hadian?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions. I now declare the hearing closed and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure? Why don't you lead off? Why don't you lead off, board member Hadian?
Similar to the previous application, this is basically adding the space for selling off-site beer and wine. It's they're following the standards of the design and the business. So I can support the project, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Board member Gamboa?
Yeah, I'm also in support of the project. Having had my car serviced there in the past, it's a bummer to lose the option so close by, but I've also waited at that bus stop and could use good snack options while I'm waiting. So I think it'll be a good addition to the neighborhood and especially as other projects come online like the Front Street project and people have access directly to that location. I think it'll be good and the design looks nice for a corner store, so I'm in favor of this project.
Board member Lou?
Also in support for the reasons my fellow board members have mentioned. I want to thank Mr. Mercer for reinvesting in the city of Burbank and in his business and trying to do good for the city. Thank you.
And I will follow in line with my board members and also like to thank Mr. Mercer for your years of community activity. I know as a kid I faced the Mercer Seventy-Sixers in baseball. Every year, you guys were always at the top of the league. So I've been around a long time too, so I appreciate seeing your name on all the little league teams and it's nice to see your face and meet the person behind those uniforms. Turn on your mic, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. I believe in having a very good, trying to have a good staff and good people and always trying to promote quality service and just good business professionalism.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Any more deliberations from planning board members? Let's get the roll call. Oh, sorry. Motion, anybody like to make a motion?
I can make the motion.
Okay.
Second. Okay, a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving a conditional use permit, project number twenty dash zero 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 two seven nine, allowing for the conversion of an existing automotive service area at an existing gas station to a convenience market that includes the sale of beer and wine for off-the-premise consumption and determination of public convenience or necessity to allow for the alcohol sale for the property at nine zero one North San Fernando Boulevard based on the findings of fact and subjected recommended conditions of approval.
We have a motion. Anybody like to make a second?
Seconded.
Second by board member Gamboa. Any more discussion? Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair. Board member Hadian?
Yes.
Board member Lou?
Yes.
Board member Gamboa?
Yes.
Vice chair Rosati?
Yes.
So that is four oh in approving the CUP request.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you Karen too for all your help.
You bet.
Thank you. And Matt, I knew you looked familiar. But Art will be opening up a shop, hopefully.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to oral communications. Now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any persons during this period may address the planning board on any matter concerning business. Comments are limited to three minutes to participate. Please call eight one eight two three eight three 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 five. There will be an approximate five-second lag time between callers as we finish one person and move on to the next. Do we have any callers from the public yet? Why don't we give it a minute?
Yeah, no callers at this time.
Mr. Rosati, I think there is agenda item number three. At least I have that in my folder.
I think you're right. I'm just following my script unless I... I'm sorry.
Oral communications comes before the report.
Right, okay.
And the agenda is listed.
Right.
So there are no callers for oral communication, chairperson.
Okay. So I now close oral communications. Now is the time for reports from staff.
We do have one report and associate planner, Marcia Medina, will be giving that update to the board members.
Good evening Vice Chair Rosati and members of the planning board. My name is Marcia Medina, associate planner and lead planner for the project. The purpose of this memorandum is to provide the planning board with an update on the operation of Lincoln Beer Company over the past eleven months and their compliance with the project conditions of approval imposed through their conditional use permit. The planning board requested that staff analyze the newly granted operations under the CUP, which allows for amplified music, onsite food trucks, and a total of four outdoor events to occur per calendar year. After speaking with the code enforcement department and the police department, staff found that there was only one call for service to the property that was resolved. Because of the limited calls for service, staff has determined that the continued operation of Lincoln Beer Company is in compliance with the conditions of approval and no further action is required.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for staff or comments? Board member Hadian?
No question, thank you.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, now is the time for approval of the minutes from July thirteen, twenty twenty, planning board meeting. Is there any questions, comments, or do we have a motion for those minutes?
I moved. Oh, go ahead. Oh. I moved to approve the planning board minutes from July thirteenth, twenty twenty.
I seconded.
So moved by board member Lou, seconded by board member Hadian. Can we have the roll call?
Sure. Board member Lou?
Yes.
Board member Hadian?
Yes.
Board member Gamboa?
Yes.
And vice chair Rosati?
Yes. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place it on a future agenda. Do any planning board members have anything they'd like to introduce? Board member Hadian?
Nothing new, it's just a follow-up on the housing housing development standards that were supposed to be updated. Do we have any updates that when we will receive the new updates? I think it's also a part of the minutes too.
Yeah, no, I believe there's gonna be a report. We're trying to get a report from Housing Economic Development to give you a status on where we're at with housing. As far as anything related to single-family, that'll be coming subsequent to what's already on your agenda forecast and that is accessory dwelling units is the next item coming to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now is the time for city planner comments, any comments from the planner?
No, thank you all for participating tonight and thank you for your patience as far as people watching for the delay. We were having some technical difficulties, but we made it through, thank you.
We now adjourn the meeting to the next planning board meeting of Monday, August twenty-fourth at six PM. The public is invited to view the meeting online on television. We will be able to provide public comment in the following ways, by leaving an e-comment on the city website, or by calling directly to the planning board meeting at eight one eight two three eight three 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 five. Thank you all for your participation and good evening.